If you like what you see, of course, leave a comment. I am at the Upper Yoder Township Supervisors Chambers. There's going to be a special meeting here to discuss some legal issues. Says here, approval of agenda, public participation, executive session, unfinished business, road department and clerical, road paving and Eland Street Playground. And then that's that. So appreciate you stopping by. Thanks for watching. Just one member of the public and my dad is here with me. And when I figured out the whole, how to put the, how to put the live streams horizontal, which is always better. Yeah, I do have a bullpen. Pretty much. No, but still, it's good, good to be here, I feel, you know? Hi, Alice. I'm good. Couple of drops, it was trying to when I was walking to the grocery store a minute ago, and it's going to, but... The older I get, that's becoming one of my favorite pastimes.
Really?
Yeah, sure. I got, I, I, I got two passes, I got two weeks out of the riding mower and then I killed it, so... Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can push, my yard's at the size where I, I, I go either way. It's a lot to push, Mo, but it's nothing to ride, so what do you do, you know? He, he's a, he's a riding mower enthusiast, he, he has a couple that, you know, he brought down.
At this time, Paul, being worth his time. Anybody under public participation?
So a quick comment, you know, these, 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 uh, my name's John Clancher, I live in Southmont. And these, these special meetings, sometimes you guys like to hide your real agenda of what you have going on. Just curious to know what the exact personnel and the exact legal situation is in, uh, in the executive session. And that's all, that's all I have today.
What goes on executive session?
Is for the executive session. Of course, I know. Thanks for the response, Ed. That was, that was a good complete circle, I liked them, not saying a word, you said, you, you said two sentences without saying a word. Thanks, man. I got your point, yep, yep.
Alright. Anybody else under public participation? At this time? We're gonna go executive session and we will read the statement.
I tend to think these, these meetings like this are, like I said, when they try to do things.
And that's, that's Christian, that's a third, forty years ago. Yeah, mine was ninety-one, ninety-two. That was Rex, Rex Ugo, once, the gentleman, he was in Las Vegas with his sister. And then for some, for some crazy reason, uh, Rex.
Terrible.
No, I'm...
Which one?
And the preacher.
Carol?
Yes.
She hasn't...
She calmed down?
She leaves me alone, I leave, you know what I mean, I leave her alone, but, I mean, she made that big stink about people parking there, and I've yet to see anybody, any of her friends, park there, you know?
I have to work with her, you know, down at the funeral home.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I'll tell you who I do like on that street.
Who's that?
I like Diane.
Across the street from me?
Yeah.
Yeah, she leaves me alone, she doesn't care what I do.
She wouldn't bother you, she just, she's like you, she wants to...
I explained to her one time, I said, well, Diane, I apologize for what I have to do. And she said, I don't, she said, look, I appreciate if you didn't, but I understand why. And she, she, she said, look, she said, it's, it's not me, you know, she said, you know, I said, and I said, I said, I said, I'll make a point to you about something. I mean, I remember Mrs. Fodler, who lived there, okay, and then I, some, there were a couple of people that, you know, were in and out of there. But anyway, when she had the, the pavers put in to, to put the walls in for her driveway, the, the contractor, right across the street, it's mine, okay? And I was actually moving into that house, I was working on that house too, with my ex-wife. My ex-wife and I were moving into Delia Street. And she had come over one day and not, you know, she saw me there and she said, hey, I need to ask you a favor. And I said, what's that? And she said, do you mind if my contractor puts the, the block here, you know, right over, she said, would you mind? And I smiled and I said, you asked. I don't care if you build Taj Mahal there, you know, go ahead, if you, you know, if you want to put whatever kind of, you know, because she asked me, I did it for, you know?
This goes back maybe three, four years, when I was driving the hearse.
Yeah.
I went up, I was going up to the funeral home. And Diane, her mother died.
Oh.
And I drove to hers.
Right, yeah.
Her mother.
You drive, you drive the hearse for everybody, huh?
We went to church for the mass and the cemetery.
She, she is really friendly, she keep, and she keeps herself, every once in a while, I get a piece of her mail and I just run it over, you know? Yeah, she's, she's one of the, one of the best neighbors you can ask for, you know, it doesn't, doesn't...
She's always, always out walking Virgil.
Yeah, okay, is that the dog's name? I never knew the dog's name, but I, she always waves to me and she's, you know, cordial, yeah, I mean, I have no problem with her, she's real friendly. Mark Yonko, too, okay? No problem with him or Tina, they are really nice, you know? I, I went to school when he was a teacher, but I never had him, I shouldn't say that. I had him when he was still a substitute. He would come in once in a while and he was, God love Mark, he used to try and teach as a substitute. Substitute teachers can't teach a what, they, if you're there for one day, filling in for a teacher, you, you just go, look, sit there and read, don't, don't tear the, don't tear the, the classroom apart, please. He would try, you know, they'd leave, you know, the teacher has to leave a lesson plan, but he would, you know, okay, today the teacher says we're gonna... Really, you know? Yeah, yeah.
This goes back about three years, I'm doing a funeral up in Nanny Club, and the preacher that's there is their son, Zach. He was the preacher.
Yeah, I, they, they've always been really, really nice to me, do you remember the Gardells that lived, okay?
They knew before them, uh, Zugates.
I didn't know them, okay, they were there when I, wait, my ex-wife bought a bunch of lawn furniture off the people, I guess it would've been the Zugates, okay, before the Gardells moved in. Now, Greg had a dog named Johnny, I love telling the story, Greg had a dog named Johnny. Why you would name your dog Johnny when your neighbor across the street's name is, okay? So every once in a while, I'd hear, I'd hear people screaming outside, Johnny, Johnny, Johnny. The only people that call me Johnny are either, hey, my family, okay, like, you know, like, like, or, 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 uh, people on Facebook, but this is before I started going by, no, no, I was going by Johnny, I'd go by Johnny on Facebook to differentiate between, cause he's John, so, you know? And people that only know me from Facebook call me Johnny, they think that's my name. And there, I hear these people that scream, Johnny, 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 I say, so one more, you know, it's, it's early in the morning, it was Easter Sunday, it wasn't actually, they're getting ready to go to church, okay, and I'm sound asleep. They're screaming, they're in my front yard screaming, Johnny, okay? That was, that was, that was the, that was the, 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 the light to the, the lighter to the fuse, the, the, the straw that broke the camel's back, you know? Pulling a pair of boxer shorts and out the door I go, hey, I'm here, what the fuck do you want? Screaming to its daughter, you know, what the fuck do you want? And she went, I'm looking for my dog, and I was like, dog's name's Johnny? And she was like, yeah, are you upset that I'm in your front yard? And I was like, no, I'm upset that you're screaming my name, and she was like, the, the, the girl, and she, she, she couldn't, I was like, my name is Johnny, and she went...
She finally got it.
Oh, okay, so, so Greg, he comes walking, I'm, I'm really sorry, we lost the dog and, you know, he's back here somewhere, and I was like, look, send the kids to get the dog, you and me have that little talk here, okay? And he went, well, what's wrong, you know, and I was like, he's like, you upset that we're in the yard? And I was like, shit less about you being in the yard, I don't care about that. What I, the problem I have is, I was like, look, you, you know me, right, we, we've spoken a few times, right, you know my name's John, right? And you went, hm, and I went, you haven't met my dad, right? So he's big John, right? And he went, oh, you're Johnny, and I was like, he's like, I'm really, he's like, and the dog's like a year old, you know, and I was like...
It wasn't the first time they lost that dog.
Right, they, the, I didn't care, you know, I really didn't, I'm a dog person, I don't, that wasn't, that wasn't the issue, okay? But I was like, I was like, he's like, I can't change the dog's name, I was like, I know, I know you can, I was like, I'm okay with that. I said, so what we're gonna do to resolve this, it's very simple. I said, when I get my next, and I, I still, I still have that be, you know, I said, when I get my next male Beagle, I'm naming him Greg. He was like, I was like, oh, yeah, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna name that dog Greg, so, I, no, I still have the same male that I had then, so when, when I finally get a new male Beagle, I'm gonna name it Greg.
She had a doctor in education.
Yeah, she was, yeah. Where are they at now, do you know?
They went either to North Carolina or South Carolina.
They went that far?
Yeah.
That's right, they did, that's right, they did.
She had her doctor.
Okay, I, you know, I like them, I like those people, they were really friendly with me, in fact, the first time I met them, they had a tree that was across Delia Street, across their phone line, and, you know, and I just, I went in and I went up, got the chainsaw and...
Little family, maybe it was Gardills, when they first moved in, they had the dog, its name was Jack?
I think so.
Jack would go on the school bus with the kids.
That, they had a dog that, that, I don't know what happened to it, but it died, really, yeah, it was poison or hit by a car or some, there was something that, and then they got Johnny, okay, yeah, you know, like I said...
And Jack would get on the school bus, we had kids.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, well, well behaved dog that Johnny was, but like I said, I mean, when he would get out, they would all go prancing around the neighborhood screaming, Johnny, and I, you know, I, even, even after I knew the dog's name, a couple of times they would, you know, Johnny, cause like, like I said, there's only a few, and, and these people that call me Johnny would, that's how they would come to find me, you know, they don't have my phone number or whatever, they would come to my house and knock on the door and yell for me. So I, you know, I, they go, something's wrong, you know, and then like, you know, oh, guys, just give me your dog, okay? Yeah, that, that's always one of those fun. No, they're, well, we, we, we might, because they, they're, we're gonna find out about, um, well, the personnel is for the road department and clerical, so either they found a secretary they, they want to hire, and they probably found somebody else for the, for the, for the road department. I think, cause they sprung this up on us, you know, he called me, he called me when I was at the grocery store, hi, Diane, you're probably watching.
It was in the paper, it was in the paper.
Yeah, I, it was yesterday though, right?
No, before that, I think last week it was in.
Hmm, I, like I said, I didn't see it, I, I, I didn't see it, in fact, in fact, your neighbor was talking to my mom on the phone, and she said, hey, there's a meeting tonight, and I was like, really? And I was getting ready to go to the grocery store, this place happens to be only about seventy-five feet out of the way to go to the grocery store, so I, I drove up and I saw the agenda and I was like, oh, I guess I have something to do this evening before I make dinner, so... I'm glad you came, cause nobody from the public ever comes to these special meetings. Cause they don't know, right? Yes.
Every day, that's, you learn more.
That's one of the few nights about, about having the pay, you know, if you get the paper.
I get it all.
Okay, right, you know, I, for as bad as it's written, I just refuse to buy it anymore, you know, it's, I was impressed with, I was impressed with, uh, Russ O'Reilly covering my situation, honestly, I mean, for what I, you know, I, I don't necessarily like some of the spin he puts on it, but still, I'm glad he's covering it, you know? So...
Kyle isn't here tonight.
No. They could stop, they could stop, they could stop. How does that work? There's only four of them, what if they get a split vote? No, I mean, how, I, I haven't looked at any comments, if anybody's looking at, watching my video and can comment, if anybody's actually watching and cares. So in, in, in Southmont, because there's a mayor, and it's a soft mayor system, if, in the event of a tie, if there isn't a super, if there isn't a, if there isn't a council member there, and the, uh, the mayor can split, the mayor votes then to, 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 to split a tie. How does it work here? Alice, you know how it works here? If they're, okay, so Kyle's not here, and if there is a, it never, I understand it never happens, yeah, if it's two and two, how, what do you guys, it just doesn't pass? Huh? Weird. Cause like, Southmont, it's, it's, if, if, if there's somebody missing. Right, I understand, but like, are all towns, do all townships have supervisors? And it's, okay, and all... Okay. Okay, what is, what is Upper Yoder considered, what do you guys, I know, but you, you're second class, okay? What's the population? You don't have to give me the exact, you know, if you know off the top of your head. Five thousand one hundred forty-seven people, okay? And that considers to be a second class citizen, second class township. Okay. Right. Okay, okay. Yeah, that's always, that's always kind of like fascinated me, the way the different play, you know, strong mayors, weak mayors, you know? So, you know, like, like the mayor of Southmont, he's just, he, he's just there for, you know? Right, he has, it, it, it doesn't really mean, but he doesn't have any say or any vote, you know what I mean? Unless there is, right, unless somebody, but if there's, and there's an odd number of, there's an odd number of, of council members, so the only time that happens is if there's somebody not there, you know, or whatever, so...
They couldn't say, did I murder, was it natural, cause, yes, they said they had heart, yeah. Yeah.
Um, nothing's.
So. Who experienced that? No, you know, you live side, you know, yeah, but, but, yeah. In that new boat. He has a house.
Hey Dad. Hey Dad.
He. You know who he's married to? Um, he plays. Dog. That's the baby divorce now, or? I don't, he was married, yeah, he was forever, everything was wrong. Everything, right now. That was scared, so. My brother, my father, Terry, I don't. Oh, you're wrong, yeah. Remember? Remember Terry? Yeah, I remember, Jimmy, Jimmy. He's the man. Yeah, yeah. Bradman? Yeah. And they took a lot, and they were, they were. Um, they were. They were part, and they're, he didn't mock me, last system. Or did, yeah, you, you tell me, who? Possibly, you know, because. You're the worst part of that once, but what they did to me. Only one year.
Shut the fuck up, Dad.
No. Everybody knows. I, I, I moved after seven years. It's, it's nice, yes, very much changed. I sold my house, I bought my house for sixty seven thousand dollars. When I left seven years later, I sold it for a hundred thousand. Was it washed over? Yeah. It's in, no, the children. The children, that place. That's your old cover. No, that's probably not. You think I'm kidding? No, I know your seat too, that's why I'm laughing, they probably would. Well, look at that, Derek, it's a car running. It's, it's bad. Yeah, Derek. I don't, I believe so, you call for it. Was it, was large? Wasn't it large, I don't think, wasn't it, was it lost somewhere? Did you stay? Well, it was, uh. They didn't know what I probably did by, they didn't know what I probably. It wasn't actually, yes, probably. Yeah, that's, that's all, that's. And then we question. Oh, pardon my. That's not gonna, how can you, I can't think that, you say. Uh, I mean, you know, who is, isn't in the show, I mean, you have to take music, you know? Well, yeah, that's fair, I think now, so, I don't know if I'm obviously. It's all eating, the water for that, to get your water. That's the way. Right. Um, was the airport, was the airport still functioning? And so that's how they made it, and that's kind of drug. I knew he had to heal life, on certain things. Yeah, that, that, that's. Yeah, yeah, anything. I, I guess the lake was started back in sixties. You know, it's a little stretch line. Right, and maybe, like. Yep. Yes, they both like stoney first. It was one of those. Yeah, yeah. And you able, uh, go, go. Being. First of all. They got a speeding. And they were, it was, it was five mile an hour. On Indian, yeah. Still, they think. Running all around there, they're raw, now you see the corner, like, apart, like, part, 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 like. Had a place, up to, up to. Uh. That's the way. But like, Indian lights go away. Yeah, up through that pass there. On the way inside. Like, when you, when you come off one sixty. Yeah. You know, it, that was back in eighteen sixty five, sixty four, sixty six. No, it was, it was up quite a way. It was up a hundred years because, you know, and he had. I'm gonna tell you what. He had. Sixteen foot core, sixty five, and it's new. But that was something that. A lot of the other, other, right? Right? Now, it's not, you know, it's not, and you get up, you get up, you're always up in the fall waters, you're standing in the water, that was big. You're giving, you know, you gotta sit in there and let it down. You know, dad told me, you're rags right. He was part under the Marine, then he got the. And Dr. Conley. Rags, he was in the compound, that dude, in big ground, right, you know? They, they, they. Ed Burke. One of the first ones, that's it. He was right off the Indian lights, the road, where you know, you know. You know, where, where Indian lights, he's in the. Yeah. It's not, he had a house right there. Okay, yeah. Ed Burke, you know, every time, the water. Up on, up on five, it's really cute. They had a place on, I guess, the channel. Yeah, yeah. He had a place on this wall, I think it was sixty five, that's probably. Now, if you can pick them up. He did, that, that, that was, he come from Zach Church. He got seventy five horse. Man, that's. Well, don't, don't kid. This is like sixty seven, sixty. Well, you know, as you get older, you know. Um, right. I go on, I start, we never had movies, James, Paul. Yeah, yeah. I was gonna find him, but. Glass, 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 and CD sixteen. Sixteen, sixteen, and one fifteen, oh. Okay, so why did that, lock it, count the jack. Look, all that guy. You look like, just like. Yeah, you know, yeah, they're absolutely bad. But anyway. I take this thing out, it's really running, I was tired from going. It's got a gas pump, big ol'. Well, I think, I think he was straight on the leg, I guess, laying about, and hold the steering wheel, so you're making, he thinks that steering wheel. Back down, I'm gonna breathe. You want, you're open up the end. Why do I have to sit in the back with, figure out what it's called? And I said, hey, I'll take it. It falls, I wanna say, it hit the, it hit the most sixties. No, it didn't. Oh, yeah, well, that still wasn't fast, no. Well, your next option. But Jeff, I have one of those. I would, I got the other one. You had a big war hunter, but Jeff, right? Um. Then I decided, I can't win another. I started, I, I, I worked. The barrel all. It was, it was, it was. The other, strike. Chat, I mean, yeah. Yeah, trying to, I didn't, I didn't, yeah. Got it, I was shook then. You know, most of the gear, you got it. Let the be drop, and I wanted to, of course, I'm trying to finish it, and. Put it all together. Well, I acquired, bought it, bought it, bought a big rock city, I have sixty million from that. And so it's got a solid, it's got a fifty dollar pump in it. I got a terrible. Okay. Now, if you wanna go get over your friends and sixty other people, you wanna watch, they're pulling. Well, yeah, it was, uh, didn't hear from that one, that one, that one. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I tell you what, I mean, Nora has. I know, because of all them people. If you did, what is that? Sitting low, hard, did, by themselves. I can remember one, I thought he had a question, he thought, Jeff goes, and then he gets unwired up. Totally in the past. Yeah, yeah, because Jeff, Jeff goes on, it's efficient. It's, 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 it's a color, that's fashion, I don't know, color in the morning. That, I mean, glass, you should. Turbines have a fine. Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, you can, if you wanna. You wanna pull, pull the elephant, see, well, you can, you can, that, that one for, yeah. It was, it was, it was, it's almost, I had an idea, these guys, seeing that they were a race, you know, but they don't. They get more us. You know, young time guys, Jeff goes, and be your, those relationships, it's why he's been helping me out, because, yeah. You know, it's, it's like stick ships and all, and that makes sense. And I tell you, I, I own a boat. Since nineteen seventy four. I own the quarter, that's nineteen seventy. You know, about twenty, remember? What? It's like. Shit, pretty. Look at it. Yeah, they put they get off, but I'm. Nobody, nobody will drive, numbers going. It's a stolen vehicle, I'm sure. Look, getting the turn, about five thousand feet, or. Seven miles. They may turn, end up, um, of that. Yeah, they don't make, they don't make them. Funny, I better die, bound with piss, okay, I'm, okay, that'd be terrible, right? I mean, I. You had another Jeff. Another Jeff. Jeff, I've seen, everything. He, 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 he said he shouldn't, he couldn't find. So. He was out, buying a place, this was, it was a good lot. It was a boxy, the priest was, uh, owned the skirts. Owned the skirts, it was one of them. A bubble. Yeah, yeah. He sold it to a private, a corporation. He says I can't get it, it was a hundred and forty two million. Because it's probably a governor.
I can't listen to this anymore. I, I, I can't listen to this, I don't understand why he's being friendly with somebody who, who, who was gonna arrest me here three months ago. I don't understand this. I mean, it's, it's just conversation to him, but he's being friendly with somebody who violated my rights in February. It's very frustrating to me, I mean, exactly, he is not my friend, and he's not my father's friend. I don't understand why he is just sitting there conversing with him like he's best friend with him.
It's sure taken a long time, isn't it?
You, you, you know, in February, when, when, when McCann grabbed me by the arm, he was with him too, Dad, and if I would've argued or anything. He would've shot me, and you're sitting there being friendly with him, talking about boats? He's not your friend. And he's not my friend, he would've violated my rights in a heartbeat, and he didn't participate in that. Why didn't you stop McCann and Zach, and why didn't you stop McCann and Polino? You were there and you walked up. Don't, I asked you a question.
I'm just explaining.
Why did?
I had, I, I didn't violate your rights. I didn't, most certainly not violate.
You didn't? McCann was the kid, McCann was the officer that grabbed me by the elbow with Polino, and he walked up too.
Ask your dad, ask your dad. McCann's, your dad could tell you all about it.
And I could, I know, I know enough about you too.
I've never given you a lick of progress, ever, ever. Ask your dad, he'll tell you.
So then why, when, when, when you, you, you know, you know that they had no right to eject me out of that room, right, for that meeting?
All I'm saying is.
Can I, can you, instead, in, 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 could you, could you answer the question, the, I asked you a direct question?
What was the direct question?
The direct question was, when you saw them arrest me.
They didn't arrest you?
Oh, yes, they did.
They did, did you, you were off it?
I was charged with disrupting a meeting, okay? You could've, Nick, this, this is the problem I have, is, look, I think you're a good guy, and I think you're a stand-up guy, okay? If you would've said, if you would've, if you would've done the right thing and went against your boss, and went, you know what? He didn't break the law, let him go, sit down. I wouldn't have this attitude with you, I wouldn't be sitting here saying to my dad, look, don't speak to him like he's friendly. This is the problem I have with you guys, okay? You know that I'm a good person, I'm a good guy, okay, I haven't broke, I haven't broken a damn law, okay? But I've been crucified, but I've been crucified by Navatney stole my truck, okay? You guys know, you guys know Officer Howe, what, Karen, Karen's, Karen's son, he's a trooper?
I don't know.
He was, okay, Nick, he was, he was, he was flying up Goucher Street, okay, in October during the rut, up sixty miles an hour, okay? Up, up through the golf course. I got, I got the, I got the number off, I got the number off of the, I got the number off of the cruiser. The next day, and I had it on video, the next day I came up and I talked to Chief Blake. He was more concerned about me with my camera, okay, and he told me that he had no jurisdiction to go out, and you used to be a state cop, correct?
No.
Oh, you never were, but he said he had no jurisdiction to file a criminal charge against a state trooper. Now, that is not true, anybody that commits a, now, stop, before you say anything, I did all the homework to make sure he was not on a call, okay? And I also, I used to work at Seventh Ward, so I know what the rules are about, you are not allowed to, you are not allowed to drive one mile an hour past the speed limit without those lights on, okay? Even in the middle of the night, that, that, that you have to be on a call to speed, okay, he was not on a call, okay? Okay? I expected. I expected that that the chief would have, would have, would have done what he would do to me if somebody came. It's it's cuz you, I can, I can go back further. Jeff Burkeyby used to come over to my house all the time. Okay? You're speeding, you're driving your Jeep all radically. You're doing this, you're doing that, okay? So I've been told about the way I drive. I wanted somebody to hold. I wanted your chief, your boss, to hold another cop accountable. And I got told that he has no jurisdiction to. To to. To go after, to 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 go after a state cop, okay? That is not true. Okay, that is an out and out lie and that is corruption is what that is. That is, that is hiding, that is hiding. Somebody and doing a favor for somebody. Okay, I have documented evidence of it, okay? And there's still time to prosecute the man. I'm reporting this to you also, okay? That was number one. Number two, hold on, just let me speak for a minute and then you could. You can, you can listen, you can listen to all my bitches and then then maybe you'll see where I'm coming from, okay? Number two, okay? Navatney pulled me over for flipping him off. Okay? The next day I went over and I went over to file a complaint. Okay? And I got a, I got a, I got charged with parking in a handicap spot. Okay? And then I know you weren't there, okay? But I'm, you're a chief of police somewhere else, okay? Let me ask you something. If you, if 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 you had a, if you had an officer in your department over in Geistown pulling the shit that Navatney did to me? Would you discipline him?
If there was an issue. That. He would be taking care of. I would take care of.
So why isn't he taking care of me? They promoted him.
I do not. I said, I wasn't even.
I know you weren't. I know you weren't.
Wasn't. You know, wasn't involved in that.
They.
I would charge him. Your chief, the older man. On the police force. The plan that's to the under. Get these young people. To do their.
Oh, boy.
That's that's my. They were. Their work. They were. Is. How many people?
Five thousand, one, five thousand, six hundred some. Alice said, told me earlier.
Well, before. I knew Wally. I knew Wally. Okay. Wally, Wally, Wally very well. Okay? He's very diplomatic about a lot of things. Okay? Wow. The things that have gone on. Okay? Should have never happened. Okay? And what it's worth. You know, somebody does something wrong. There was things done wrong. I don't know what you don't. No, let me, let me say this. In your defense. You don't know where it all started. And what it's from. Okay? You'd like to know? I can explain the whole story. Maybe sometime I think you should be aware of. I really do.
I'll make him aware. In twenty fifteen, John Moser. John Moser on Southmont Boulevard. Put a gun to my head. He arrested me at gunpoint with a gun to my head. I was laying on the ground, okay? Hannick from the city. Okay? Had me out of the car and laying on the ground and Moser came and ran up to me and put his gun to my head. Out. Finger on the trigger, Nick. Okay? I still wake up at night over that.
It's definitely. Absolutely.
He could have blown my head up. Guess what? Guess those those charge. You know what, though? You're a cop and you signed up for that. I don't ever wanna be shot at. Okay?
Oh, okay, but.
That's number one. Number two, those charges were dismissed, dropped. We don't have any evidence against you, sorry. But these, you're so about your point, you put a gun. Moser put a gun to my head. Okay? Yes, I did.
You know, what?
Wally did nothing. Do you know why? Because West Hills prosecuted me. It was George. Here, he was working here. And if you wanna see the report, I have the report over at the house if you wanna see it. I understand that, but you know.
There's a lot of politics. And a lot of stuff that is going on. Over. Years. Okay? Well, I stay out of. Well, I. I mean, that's. I'll take it. I'll take it back. Back in nineteen fifty's.
Spark.
Nice. These guys don't even know. Guy by the name of Wayne. Was the chief of police here. He was also, we should call him the justice of the peace. Did those on Bronx Avenue. Okay, Wayne had a. Oh, it was Johnny Rankin. After Wayne retired. Roy Richards took over. Roy was a garbage man.
I remember.
He gave up his garbage truck and became the chief of police.
Well, those are the days before he got.
Yeah.
Those are the days.
And before. Before, after Roy Richards, there was Harry Rager. You had to know.
I remember.
Harry's a nice man.
Yes.
Nice man. He was had some problems.
And herky hover.
Herky. And herky was in ours, but talking of. It's cheap.
That's a great.
Yeah.
Right. Clay's.
Clay's. He's a Jason. I'm gonna tell you right now. If you catch it. Well. I'm gonna tell you what.
No, you don't.
He. I'm gonna be quite honest about it. He would have made one hell of a service. So is good. You know, he. Well, let's see, he was a year younger than he graduated in sixty six. That good. Cause he ended up, he ended up on Green Valley Street or something. That's where he ended up. He sued. The house. For making money. For what?
You remember, you don't remember. They fired him.
They fired him?
They they fired him, they fired him. They fired him for destroying, for destroying the logs out of, out of the cruisers.
I'll tell you what. You do it. You know, Roy shit. Yeah. Give him my picture. Okay.